Mark, we doing the livestream for this? Is all livestream not good?
I now call order the work session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2015, at 6:30 roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Mr. Terrapini.
Here.
Mr. Banther.
Here.
And Commissioner Seabird is absent in excuse.
We'll now go to our public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Seeing none, we'll go to item number one, storm rate study. Bob, did you want to start off?
No, I'll let him go.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. For the camera, I'm Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager. And I'm here tonight in my role as the former caretaker of the Stormwater Capital Improvement Program. As you know, the recent department reorganization placed the stormwater program in the Public Works Department under Tom Funtzen, who's here tonight, and the new Streets and Stormwater Supervisor, Tony Manella, who's also here tonight. That was back in February. I want to thank you for your time tonight to discuss the stormwater utility rates. After my brief intro here, you'll be hearing a presentation from Andy Burnham of Burton and Associates. Andy's been working with the city for many years as the city's water and sewer rate consultant. And this is the first time since the stormwater utility was created in 2001 that we've taken a close look at stormwater rates. They've not been changed or updated since then. Andy will present the material that you received in your backup. This includes a brief history of the stormwater program and some rate alternatives that we've explored for moving forward with the stormwater program. Before I bring Andy up to make this presentation, I'd like to give you just a very brief overview of the stormwater program. The utility, which started in 2001, is run as an enterprise fund, which is supported only by the revenue from the stormwater utility. It's not supported by the city's general fund. The program's purpose is to address flooding and water quality issues. It is financially supported exclusively by user fees. The current fee is $5.65 per equivalent stormwater unit, ESU. Residential properties count as one ESU, so a resident would pay $5.65 per month for a stormwater utility. Commercial industrial stormwater ESUs are computed as a factor of their impervious surface area. The stormwater utilities funds are spent in two main program areas, maintenance and capital improvement. Maintenance includes cleaning of storm pipes, pond maintenance, street sweeping, and the purchase and the maintenance of the equipment necessary to do those jobs. Capital improvement work has been completed under the Stormwater Action Plan, which is the master plan that we presented to the board back in 2010. And we've completed some important projects under this program, which Andy's going to highlight in his presentation. So without any further ado from me, I'm going to turn it over to Andy, who's going to give you the stormwater management plan update.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Andy Burnham, Senior Vice President with Burton and Associates. I've had the privilege to serve the community relative to the water and sewer rates for a number of years and look forward to the discussion this evening relative to the financial management of your stormwater fund. As Bob indicated, the fund itself is dedicated to providing for the operations and maintenance as well as capital improvement funding for your stormwater system. There are a number of key maintenance programs that the system and the system of fees and charges is designed to support the funding for, which we've listed in the presentation. And it's also notably intended to provide for funding sources for ongoing infrastructure improvements. And as Bob indicated, we're going to go through just some of the recent improvements that the fund has provided for within the city that ultimately has resulted in the use of many of the stormwater funds that have been accumulated since the fees were adopted in 2001. And we're also going to discuss during the conduct of the presentation tonight several future projects that are planned. I've listed some of those here on the current slide that ultimately will lead you to decision alternatives relative to the financial management plan for the system and understanding of really the key driver being the timing of capital infrastructure improvements and the nexus between that and the rates that you have to charge to cover those costs. In terms of some of the historical projects, we worked extensively with your staff to gather some good before and after photos. The after photos have the black box around it. The before photos don't have a border on them. This is the South Distant Avenue project. It raised the elevation and also addressed the storage vaults under the road. There was some supplemental funding from FDOT for this particular project, but ultimately, just for the stormwater piece of the project, the city ultimately had to fund about $694,000 from the stormwater fund to address the stormwater aspects of that particular project. Similarly, for Walton Avenue, that was another stormwater project. Ultimately allowed for expanding a stormwater pond and added a new pipe crossing across Walton Avenue. That was about $222,000, and you can see again before and after photos based upon that capital improvement. Roosevelt Boulevard was another notable project. Roadway reconstruction that was stimulated by a stormwater improvement need. There was new pipes and swales installed as part of that project at a cost of about $253,000 from the stormwater fund with some supplemental funding from Penny Ford Pinellas. There is also the Stafford Avenue Recreation Project and Wetland Restoration. There was a number of features of that particular project, adding a boardwalk for Pinellas Trail Access, restored soils and wetlands to its natural conditions, and also augmentation to a new park design. That was all at a cost for stormwater-related aspects at $426,000. Hibiscus Street was another property-related project. City property considered for sale was salvaged for a new stormwater pond. The cost included the pond itself, curb, as well as sidewalk. The cost for that particular project was about $120,000 for the stormwater aspects. And lastly, Chesapeake Drive was another notable project. The stormwater design was added after the roadway design began. It added a new swell system to improve drainage in that particular area at a cost for stormwater-related items at $173,000. So some pretty notable improvements that your stormwater fee has provided for in recent time. Starting with a bit of a high-level summary before we go into some of the detail of what our findings were. The existing fees have really reached their limit in terms of what they can support for infrastructure and ongoing maintenance costs. And if we model that out, the simply won't generate sufficient revenue to meet the current operating costs projected out with inflation as well as the current capital improvement program that we'll talk about in a minute. And as Bob indicated, the last time the fees were adjusted was in 2001. And just as a frame of reference, since that time, the overall CPI has increased by about 35% since or over that 14-year time period. And as we model it out with the current fees in place and no adjustments, we will exhaust the fund balances of the utility system within about three years by fiscal year 18, based upon the current operating costs and capital needs of the system. So we then looked to alternative scenarios relative to combinations of fee adjustments and capital spending plans. Alternative one resulted in a dollar annual increase in the fee for five years, fiscal year 16 through 20. So that $5.65 fee would increase to $6.65 in fiscal year 16, to $7.65 in fiscal year 17, et cetera, through 2020. That would fund the full $6.8 million capital improvement program through fiscal year 2025. We then looked at an alternative that would, instead of having a dollar annual increase in the fee for five years, would increase it 50 cents per year for 10 years. It would basically extend that time horizon out for fee adjustments from five years to a 10-year plan. However, by doing so, we then would have to defer capital improvements beyond the current 10-year forecast period to the tune of about $2.1 million, or approximately a third of the CIP, would have to get pushed out of the 10-year time period because the rates wouldn't support the funding of it. To put this into perspective, we also did some extensive comparative analysis of current fees of neighboring communities. And also, with the assistance of your staff, submitted inquiries to find out what their plans were for their stormwater systems and fee adjustments. And what we found is not only are you comparable today, but based upon our findings for expectations of future increases of other communities, you'll continue to be very comparable in the future in cost under either of these two alternatives. Now, in terms of the source data and assumptions that we relied upon in the conduct of the study, just to go over those for just a moment. The first was we started with the most current audited fund balances. We utilized the revenues per the 15 budget plus assumed growth and fee adjustments. We also integrated the operating requirements per the most current approved budget, adjusted for assumed cost inflation. We reviewed each line item with staff to look at trends in spending and increases in cost factors for each particular line item. And we also integrated the capital requirements on a project-specific basis as provided by staff for the utility system. And we did include a 3% allowance for future inflation on those costs based upon the most current construction cost index values. And we also designed the analysis to maintain, at the end of the day, a minimum reserve equal to three months of O&amp;M, which is consistent with industry practice for stormwater utility systems, which equates to about $185,000 to $285,000 over the 10-year time period. So what I've included in the PowerPoint presentation that's part of your packet is a screen capture of the status quo. What happens if there are no fee adjustments over the 10-year time period? And what you can see is at that top-left graph, our funds, in fact, are fully exhausted by fiscal year 18. And really, if we were to play it forward through the entire 10-year time period, we'd have a $7 million deficit in the fund by 2025. That's indicative of a situation where the cash out, the expenses are simply exceeding the revenues of the system, as evidenced by the graph on the top right. So we then looked at alternative plans. The plan of a dollar increase in the fee on an annual basis for five years, what that would do is ultimately allow for the second five years to have no increases. And it would also allow us to fund the entire capital improvement program at 100% and maintain adequate reserves throughout the entire projection period, equal to or slightly above that three-month minimum target. And it would result in a system that has sustainability in mind, where on an annual basis, it's set up for revenues to match its ongoing expenditure requirements into the future. Now, the key difference, as I mentioned, between this alternative and the second alternative is that we're ultimately looking at a 10-year plan of adjustments for the system under alternative two, which ultimately gets you to a very comparable fee over the entire 10-year time period. It's just instead of getting there in five years, you get there in 10. And by doing so, you then lose some of the revenue generation in the earlier years, and you have to cut the capital spending as a result. And what you can see from that particular graph is that $2.1 million of capital would have to be deferred beyond fiscal year 2025. And in easy-to-understand project terms, that would be the Penn Street and Distant Avenue as well as the Center Street projects. So two notable projects in the CIP would have to get deferred beyond the current 10-year time period based upon this particular financial management plan in order for this particular fund or for this particular plan to be sustainable over the entire five- and 10-year projection period. Now, I mentioned that we did a significant amount of surveying of other utility systems as part of the analysis. The graph that's on the screen now is a current fiscal year 2015 survey of stormwater charges for a typical single-family home, or one ESU, as Bob indicated. And we've identified what the current fees are in red, with Tarpon Springs highlighted in the blue bar. And then also, based upon our research, identified with arrows what their expected adjustments are for fiscal year 16. And you can see many of them are anticipating increases for fiscal year 16, and only a couple have no immediate plans for increases for the next fiscal year. And you can see Tarpon Springs is currently just about in the middle of the pack in terms of the current stormwater fee. And as I indicated, we would expect it would compare very favorably going forward based upon what we understand many of these other communities are looking at in terms of adjustments of their own fees. And to elaborate on that point for just a particular minute, the City of Clearwater, they typically approve multi-year plans of increases for their stormwater utility system, much like what the City of Tarpon Springs has done for its water and sewer utility. Those increases are at 2.75% per year, and they extend through 2017. They're currently conducting a rate study update, and so those increases may change and may even be extended. But that's currently being evaluated, but presently by ordinance, it's approved through 2017. The City of Dunedin recently conducted a rate study and approved 4.5% increases in their fees in fiscal year 16 and 17, followed by 3.5% increases in 18 and 19. Pinellas County recently adopted their stormwater fee just a couple of years ago. And we do work for them for their water and sewer systems, and they've indicated no adjustments identified for fiscal year 16, but they expect future increases at some point in the future as that fund is not quite 100% self-sufficient. For Safety Harbor, they have no increases identified for fiscal year 16 as of yet. However, it's our understanding their proposed 16 budget includes funding for a citywide rate study that would include water sewer sanitation as well as stormwater. So we would expect potential adjustments on the horizon for Safety Harbor in the near term. St. Pete Beach, we're actually conducting a similar study for that community presently. They're looking at a five-year plan that would take their current fee on a monthly basis from about $7 a month to $14 per month over that five-year planning period. City of St. Petersburg currently has no increases planned through fiscal year 18. They may or may not have potential increases thereafter, depending upon what they do with some of their outstanding debt. If they refinance it and avoid a big balloon payment, they may be able to continue that practice, but that's presently unknown. Newport Ritchie has no increases planned for the near future. You may have read about Largo and their 25% increase proposed for fiscal year 16 with additional future increases anticipated even beyond the initial 25%. Oldsmar indicated future increases are likely but presently unknown. Similarly, with Port Ritchie, they understand their fee is very low at $3 per month and that they need to start addressing it in its future plans. And then you may have also read about Tampa and the recent press couplings indicating a potential increase in their stormwater fee from $3 a month all the way up to $15. Pasco County, we weren't able to gather any information, and Gulfport's indicated that they don't have any plans to increase their fee over the next two years. So that gives a little bit of a perspective about what other communities are looking at from a rate increase perspective. But there's also many things to consider in terms of differences in fees. Communities have different levels of service that oftentimes will dictate different cost requirements and then subsequently have higher or lower fees depending upon those level of service objectives that they've set. Topography, just the simple level of flooding that communities have to deal with because of their elevation will oftentimes dictate more or less costs involved with stormwater management. The rate structure may also influence how you would compare in these surveys using a one-size-fits-all approach versus specific increments based upon impervious area. Also, the level of cost recovery. Many communities have elected not to fund stormwater with 100% of the user fees historically. However, many communities now are moving to a self-sufficient enterprise fund perspective with stormwater, much like water and sewer, much like what the city is trying to do with its stormwater enterprise fund as well. So in summary, just a few conclusions that hopefully would be a good segue to some discussion. Continuing with the status quo ultimately would result in depletion of the fund balance by fiscal year 18 based upon the current cost requirements of the system. And therefore, action would be required now to implement the CIP as currently developed with city staff. That would be alternative one. We did look at alternative approaches, deferring capital, which was alternative two that was included in the PowerPoint this evening. We also looked at the opportunity or possibility of debt funding certain projects to see if that would mitigate some of the rate increases that were needed to fund those projects. However, by issuing that debt sooner than what the funding is currently planned in the CIP, we actually begin incurring costs sooner plus interest that actually make the debt funding a not a viable option for the stormwater fund. It actually results in deferring of capital, even in the 50 cent per year increase scenario because of those additional interest expenses and sooner expenses happening from the debt funding in fiscal year 16. And ultimately, at the end of the day, the current fee is very comparable to those of neighboring communities. And based upon our research and understanding of the local communities' expected increases for their systems to maintain them as well as to address their infrastructure needs, we would expect that the city would be comparable under either alternative one or two into the future. So with that, that concludes the presentation that we prepared for this evening. And I'll be happy to offer it myself as well as your staff to address questions.
Well, I'd like to thank you for the work you've put into it. I don't know if I thank you for bringing it to us. But one of the things is that you said that other cities have used the general fund to defray some of it. Ours is basically just run from our fees. Any of these cities that you've talked about around us that's doing that?
They did historically. A good example would be the City of Dunedin. While they didn't use tax dollars, what they did is instead use some Penny Ford Pinellas funding for stormwater capital improvement projects. And so they used that to augment the funds provided by the rates for their enterprise fund. Pinellas County, I know, has historically used the general fund because they just implemented the user fee fairly recently. But many of these communities have moved to systems where the stormwater utility fees cover the full cost of providing the service, partially to alleviate burdens on the general fund for competing services and projects, but also from a benefit nexus because the stormwater fee is based upon impervious area and it's treated more like a utility system and a user fee where users that contribute to the cost subsequently pay for them. So hence, larger properties with more impervious area pay more for stormwater, which may not necessarily be tied to value, which it would be in the general fund. So there's reasons that utilities have, or communities, I should say, have moved from supplemental funding to more of a pure enterprise fund view for stormwater.
Right. The other thing is, and I know that the appearance is that, you know, it's a dollar, and that's not a lot, but dealing with seniors within the community, my thoughts are is that if we did something like with the 50 cents, I know that, you know, you said that some of the projects that we have would have to be delayed. Is there any thought as to coming back at a later time in terms of some type of adjustment up that would put us in line to do the same thing? You know, starting off with, say, 50 cents, and then at some point in time to look at an additional increase that would still get us to that point?
Yeah, we could look at that. And what we started with was the, what would the plan be to fund the CIP as structured? And then a more moderate plan that we came up with. We could look at several alternatives in between. We didn't specifically look at that one, but we could certainly develop a plan that would do that, still fund the capital improvement program, but in a way that the adjustments are phased in over time.
And that's one of the important points and one of the purposes of tonight to introduce it. Because really, as you can see with that formula, you can do a lot of different things with it. You said with water. I mean, you can start and go gradually. You could do a lot of different things, and that's some of the feedback, you know, we wanted to get tonight, if there's any other scenarios, to look at a graduated scale up, front loading, back loading, middle loading, something like that. You know, obviously, with that plan, you know, you can do a lot of things with it. These were just two examples that we gave you to get the full way and another way to get by and postponing some projects. But, you know, they can plug any scenario into their formula and bring it back to look at even more options, like you had said, to do. So that, again, that's one of the purposes of the informational tonight, to get it and get some ideas of maybe some other things the next time you look at this, some other scenarios you might need to, you know, you might want to see about getting to where we need to get to and, you know, deferring the projects the least amount of time.
Well, and the thing is that I think all of us realize that a lot of these projects are definitely needed. I mean, they're not the type of projects that people think about day in and day out, except for when it rains. Then everybody's very, very concerned about it. And, you know, when it's not, then nobody else. But it's something that we have to be continuously thinking about. I know that Pinellas County, you know, even though they was, as you say, they was funding it themselves, they wasn't doing a good job in terms of trying to stay ahead of where they should be, which is why they went to the fees and now kind of like, you know, trying to catch up, so. But I appreciate this. And like I say, my thoughts are is that if we look at something that would get us where we want to go, but for those individuals, like I say, it does seem like it's a lot. But when you're on fixed income, every dollar is still a dollar there, that maybe we could do something a little creative, so. But I was going to ask, Mr. Terrapini.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to thank you for your presentation and certainly want to thank staff for their efforts in the projects that we've completed in recent years. And same goes for you, Mr. LaCource. I know that this rate increase was something that was brought to your attention back in the, you know, 2008, 2009 days. And I want to thank you for your forward thinking not to ask us to do any increases in those times because those were certainly challenging. I do have a few questions tonight and definitely scenarios that I think would be something potentially for us to look at. First off, I think moving forward, if we do another work session, which I think is a good idea for something like this, if we could have the list of all of the capital improvement projects that we see fit for the coming years, I guess through, since we're talking about fiscal year 2020 and also fiscal year 2025, if we can see that whole list, I think that would be prudent for the commission. I have on my list the stormwater comparisons. Glad you have that. Appreciate it. I guess some of the things that I would look for is essentially, you know, what we can do in terms of maybe getting the ball rolling, but also, like the mayor said, you know, people are on fixed income. So the last thing we want to do is do a rate increase that can be burdensome to the majority of our population. I guess one of my questions would be if we didn't do anything for two years in terms of capital improvement projects, and this may be a question for you, Mr. Herring. The stormwater fund, does it grow in terms of some of those monies are invested? Does the fund grow if we weren't to do anything? Does it grow in terms of like a percentage or a rate increase from investments? Is that money invested?
Ron Herring, Finance Director. I mean, yes, right now, there's about 1.5 million in there. As you know, interest rates right now aren't that great. We've got an average of probably 70 basis points is what we're earning. But yes, there is growth, but it's not what I'd like.
Yeah, but nonetheless, there is growth.
Yes.
Okay, so the point is on that, potentially a scenario, and I don't have any idea what the scenario may be, but maybe we don't do anything for two years. And at that point, we run a model to say, okay, if we don't do anything for two years, the growth on the account will be this, and there'll be an additional $200,000 in the account. I don't know that that's the best scenario to take, but to me, that's something that we should potentially look at. And that also goes to the list of having all of the capital improvement projects. One of the other things that I thought we could potentially do as a commission or with staff's direction is to prioritize that list, you know, moving forward and say, hey, look, these are the projects that we really think we need to address. These are the projects that could potentially wait. And, you know, again, maybe two, three, five years goes by and some of that, some new money is identified without having to do a rate increase. One of the other things I have on my list is I know on some of the projects, we've had other funding sources, whether it be from DOT or, I don't know, Bob, does SWIFTMUD get involved at all? Is there any money available to them, or are we tapped out on that? Pretty tapped out.
Yeah, to answer your question, there is some money available through some grant programs. It's a little bit more difficult to get SWIFTMUD grant funding for stormwater programs or projects. I haven't attempted it yet, and part of the reason I haven't attempted it is because it's a full-year cycle before, from when you apply, before you even get approved for the funding. So maybe, you know, if this isn't in line with what the board's direction is, maybe we start looking for some grant funding projects now. And if we go along with your suggestion, those can be the projects we push out for two years.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm not, you know, making brilliant suggestions. I mean, I was just curious if there is additional funds available to us in terms of grant money, which it sounds like potentially there is.
Potentially from SWIFTMUD, yeah. And if, you know, if it's the board's appetite to do so, you could use Penny Ford Pinellas funding for stormwater projects. But I know that we have a different direction, and I personally feel like SWIFT, excuse me, stormwater funds should be used for stormwater projects, and Penny Ford Pinellas should be used for the more public improvements. I think that's a better use of the word, just my opinion. But, you know, if that is your direction, we could certainly move some money around and do projects then.
And what was the reason for DOT to get involved? Because at that time, Tarpon Avenue was still, they were still in possession?
Yeah, that was part of the deal of the transfer of Tarpon Avenue to the city. They paid us to help accommodate a portion of that stormwater related to, that portion of that project was to accommodate the stormwater runoff from Tarpon Avenue.
That was a rare case.
Yeah, that was, that was once in a lifetime, I think. Just to give you a feel for it, my rule of thumb roughly on an annual basis is after you take all the revenue from the stormwater utility and you use the money, you set aside the money for operations, O&amp;M costs, basically your fixed costs for your stormwater program, what's left is roughly around $400,000 per year for capital projects. And over the years, we hadn't done any stormwater projects. We were doing essentially what you were suggesting, socking that money away, letting that account build up. And over the last five years or so, those projects that you saw in the presentation, that's what we use that money for. So, you know, rule of thumb, about $400,000 a year is what we accumulate for capital projects. So if I do one $600,000 project, I'm using a year and a half's worth of money, quote unquote.
Yeah, I understand. That was actually one of my questions. In terms of the graphs that were shown, how are those graphs, you know, being measured? I mean, in terms of expenses. So we have our, basically, our So we have our, basically our fixed expenses that go towards maintenance. And then as far as the balance of those graphs, as far as the capital improvement projects go, how are those done? Were those, did staff give you a list of the projects in terms of priority?
Absolutely, excuse me, absolutely. Project specific list by year that then we then modeled the cash flow funding requirements for and looked at utilizing any available reserves above our minimum recommended target that you keep three months of O and M on hand for liquidity purposes. And then measured annually the adequacy of the revenue provided by the rates plus fund balance above that minimum to pay for O and M and capital spending. And then looked at trying to levelize plans to avoid rate spikes that might otherwise occur if you tried to defer any type of adjustments over a longer period of time. So we worked through that process iteratively, but it's all based on very specific line item O and M data and capital project specific cost data provided by staff.
So all, so those graphs could potentially be rerun with a different priority in terms of projects?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Bob, real quick, just a question as far as, like, when we go to do a project, you have project A and you have project B. And project A maybe is, they're equal costs. Let's say they're $500,000. And project A, maybe there's more infrastructure required, so that drives that cost up. If you're looking at two projects, if project B, can it potentially be solved easier with some purchase of land in the surrounding area to hold the retention? Like, for example, the project on Tarpon Avenue. It was extremely costly because there's, there's retention underneath the road, right?
Right.
Okay, so that also goes in terms of what I've saying, what I'm saying for prioritizing the project. Maybe we have some projects, you know, we have five projects that are a lot easier of a fix because we have real estate available to hold the water and we don't have to, there's less infrastructure work, because the infrastructure work's more expensive, right? I mean, in theory.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, that's another way for me to kind of think about it in terms of how we prioritize it. You know, if there's a need, there's a need, but, you know, maybe we look at some projects that are less costly because there's less infrastructure work involved.
I can speak to that a little bit. The Stormwater Action Plan is our capital improvement plan for the stormwater program. It was developed over about a year it took us and it was back in 2009, 2010 when we did that. This is the list of capital projects that Andy's talking about that we provided to him to put into the model. The prioritization you're talking about is exactly the process we went through. With our consultant at the time and with staff, we went through and we made up a big, long list of projects. And then we came up with a scoring system for each of those projects. Scoring criteria such as emergency vehicle access, if floods were, floods, homes were flooding, or how many were flooding. If there was an environmental aspect to it. If there were a lot of complaints, customer complaints for that particular project area. All those things were factored in and then scored. And then what we did was we put those aside and we look at, looked at each project and evaluated the cost. How much, just like you're saying, how much infrastructure would be involved, if there's some land purchase we would need to do, et cetera. And then we took, calculated an index, a bang-for-your-buck index, just like you're saying. You know, how much points, how many points, dollars per point is each project worth? And the lower that was, the better we would do that project. Those are the ones that got prioritized because we could get a high, good point score, if you will, for a low dollar cost. And those are exactly the ones that you saw.
I mean, moving forward, if we can, if you can provide that to us as we try and make a decision, you know.
Yeah.
One way or another, I think that that's helpful.
That's actually on the city website. It may be a little, about three months out of date, but it is available there and I should have included it in your backup. It would have made it a little bit more convenient for you.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm sure we're going to have another meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
As far as, like, our projected increase, whether it's a dollar or whether it's 50 cents. I see in some, some of the research you did in the backup that you show other municipalities their increase as a percentage. What would ours be at one or at one dollar or at 50 cents?
At, and if we look at, and it's actually on the screen before you know, that the alternative to, those percentages are identified at the top of the schedule. So if you look on the rate increase line up here, I've got a laser pointer. It's about 8% initially, almost nine, and then it tapers off. This is the 50 cent scenario.
Is that, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is there a page number?
It's a slide number 13. And so on a percentage basis, that's how the 50 cent correlates in terms of a percentage increase. And then in the green bars below it, that's for the dollar plan. So you can see that's about 17.7%, 15, 13, it tapers down.
And the reason I ask that, as we're talking about potentially looking at, you know, servicing some debt, right? If the increase, you know, is at a 8% or a 15%, and we can service the debt for interest rate of, I don't know what, maybe, I mean, 1%. You know, maybe that's something that we also consider. Not, I mean, I'm not a fan of servicing the debt or borrowing money to do these projects when we don't necessarily have to. But I mean, maybe it's cheaper money. Maybe it's easier for us to do that. Again, just, you know, food for thought. I think that's all I've got right now, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd also like to thank you for the presentation this evening. It's certainly a lot of information. One question I have, and I'm not sure who wants to answer this, but what is our timetable? When are we hoping to make decisions? And related to that, what are we hoping to actually accomplish tonight? Just gather information, develop a list of questions?
Yes, mainly tonight. That's the point is to introduce. It's a lot. That's why we tried to get to you a week early to look at, to give the presentation tonight, to get questions where you wanted to go. There's really, you know, not a timeframe. I mean, I was hoping to come back maybe, you know, next month at a meeting, maybe the second meeting of July to discuss it more. See where we are, bring you any information that you asked for tonight or in another work session to bring that. And again, we can adjust things. This is one of those things, no matter what we do, including nothing, we can do things. We just need to make a plan. Obviously, you know, you could wait the next year to make the decision and we'd adjust things that. Or you could do a smaller increase to start for a couple of years and then see where we need to go and it would just hold the price. So there's a lot of different ways we can go and we can adapt anything. Again, if we go back to a pure maintenance thing and kind of just to go over where that was in 2009. Obviously, in 2009, about a year after I took over and we saw there was, there was a good amount of money in the fund. And we knew we had a lot of projects to do. So obviously, at that time, it would have probably been the wise thing to start doing the projects and then starting this process going up, anticipating this next wave. But obviously, we all know what happened in 2009, 2010 in the economy and everybody hurt. And so there was no way to do it, but I didn't see holding that money back. And we knew, I mean, you know, 30 years ago, 36 years ago, as a rookie on patrol policeman, we're drowning police cars out in that distin. The new officers would forget and they'd be underwater. I mean, you're pulling cars out there underwater. We knew some of those major things you had seen on there we had to address. So instead of keep holding the money for five more years, that's why we went through that process, which again, if we get them to report a very extensive, I think, like you say, a year-long project. Let's get those major ones and let's spend that money in these bad economic times. And then we knew a time in the future we'd have to address it. Can we go a couple more years and just stay status quo, fix the little things, not do any major projects and see where things go? Sure. And again, that's where we need the way, what we're going, are we going to do something now? We're going to wait and look? We're going to do something gradual, you know? And that's why I anticipated we needed two or three meetings, just a round table, get your ideas out and see which way we're going to go. But any way we go, we can adjust and it won't hurt. It just, and again, the major, if you look at this thing, when it boils down to it, the major project, and I don't know, maybe you describe it for him, is the area to the, to the east of City Hall, that, the basin we call it. Because anybody knows it and, you know, where I have a ton of complaints and people yelling at me and I say, you know, I remember that from when I was a kid. And if you remember the old maps, that's a basin. Y'all built your houses or bought your houses and the biggest basin, the Tarpon Springs, obviously, it's going to flood. And even these $2 million that, the next place to go is almost $2 million to help with the issues in the basin. You know, when, when do we do that? Obviously, we've gone many years with it there. So that's the biggest question, because if we stay status quo, obviously, if we don't do the next projects, which are $2 million, yeah, we got two or three more years to go. And it's just when we're going to do it. So a lot of questions, a lot of scenarios, but we're not hurting any, anything we do is not going to, you know, if we do nothing, it's not going to break everything. There'll still be the normal stormwater, the smaller projects, we got the flooding, design a simple solution and the $30,000, $40,000 project to do that or those kind of things. You know, that'll still go on as we go. It's just, you know, we need to think about, you know, where in the future and how long we're going to address those, those major things.
I appreciate that answer. And I think it's important, and let me say this, I appreciate the projects that we have done. I think we've made a lot of progress and I think it's important that we continue to try to be proactive. I guess maybe that's not accurate. I guess we've been reactive all along and I guess we need to continue to be reactive. I don't think it's okay to do nothing. So I appreciate what we've done. I think there is more work to be done. So it sounds like your thought is that we have this meeting now, we have another meeting to discuss this further in a month. And sometime after that, theoretically, hopefully come forward with some kind of a decision.
Yes.
Okay. On the, on page 10, where it talks about source data and assumptions, and you might have mentioned this, but I just wanted to clarify. Do the, do the assumptions take into account some of the incoming residential developments and the additional revenue that those will offer?
We did include a very modest amount of growth in the forecast. It was about, on average, 25 new equivalent service units per year, so it wasn't significant in nature. But we did include a allowance for some growth in the forecasted revenues.
Could you repeat that? What were you assuming?
25 new equivalent service units per year.
And what was that based on? That was just kind of a?
Consistency with what we'd seen in the data in terms of equivalent service unit growth over the past couple of years, as well as consistency with similar forecast assumptions on a percentage growth rate basis with what we did for the water and sewer system.
I'm not sure how hard that would be to do before, before we get together again, but I wonder if you could reexamine what the upcoming growth will be for the city and how that might affect revenue for that fund. Because we do have a relatively encouraging number of incoming developments. Another question that I had, looking at page 14, which, which I really appreciate the amount of work that went into the fee survey. I think it's important that we see what our surrounding communities are doing. The green arrows simply indicate that there's likely to be an increase, but they don't show at all what the increase will be.
That's what the next slide does, is for those agencies that have the green arrow, there's some narrative behind it that tells you what the types of increases are that have been approved or that they're being proposed right now.
Because it seems like, and I mean, I guess I'd have to pull out a calculator and make my own graph, but it seems like if we did a dollar next year and I see, you know, St. Pete Beach, Safety Harbor, some of these other municipalities are also looking at an increase. If we do a dollar next year, we'd still be in a relatively competitive spot. If we do a dollar the year after that, we'd still be in a relatively similar spot. But as we look at continuing to do a dollar for five years, it seems like we're probably going to be jumping several municipalities on that chart. Am I correct in my understanding?
Well, there's a couple of them that'll be moving similarly with you. St. Pete Beach, for example, will be going from their current fee of $7. They're considering this, so I shouldn't say is going, but they're considering as, as part of their upcoming fiscal year 16 budget process, adopting a five-year plan for their fee to take it from $7 a month to 14. And so they'll move up appreciably in the survey. Also, Largo has identified a proposed 25% increase for next year with similar levels of increases expected for the next couple of years. So I would expect if that goes through as has been indicated, that they would move up rather significantly in the chart as well. And the other one will be Tampa. I would expect some substantial movement there. I don't know if they're going to go all the way to the $15 that they'd indicated in their proposed budget discussions, but I would expect some notable increases for that particular one as well. So there are some systems that are looking at some pretty substantial increases that I feel pretty comfortable from a position perspective. You're going to be pretty comparable in cost.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It's not a dollar additionally every year, is it? That's not what you're proposing. It's just one, it is?
Yeah, so the first year would go from the 5.65 to 6.65.
And then another dollar.
Then another dollar. And so that would be the five-year plan. And so over time, that would result in a fee of 10.65.
Which, and Commissioner Chair Panty's question brings, brings me to my next question. Is, is there an inherent advantage for us to look at a five-year decision as opposed, like, why not look at this on a yearly basis? Or why not make a two-year decision? Is, is there any particular advantage in looking at a five-year decision?
Well, in this particular case, the advantage is it's a little bit more predictable than some of the other utility services because the revenue stream is very stable and the expenses that you have in your CIP, they're based upon a very specific project-based plan. So it's very easier, it's much easier to plan over a multi-year period for a stormwater system as opposed to, say, water and sewer, which you really need to look at annually. So that's the advantage is you can adopt a multi-year plan and then just continue to monitor if you're tracking with it as opposed to having a similar type of discussion like this every single year.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions at this time.
Yes, thank you very much for this. I appreciated this whole outline. It helped numbers-wise to see what's going on. And I agree, I agree with my colleagues as well, their questions. I all support. I guess my, my main thing that, that, that has been said is that if we had a list of projects that we know are coming forth and what their cost might be and, you know, how that would affect things, would help us first in making this, this decision. Because we can say, well, that can be pushed back. That can be pushed back or this is priority. I think that would be key to, I'm in doing that. And then like you said, identify some of those projects in which we can use grant funds. I know you said there's a, there's a year delay, correct, and then the grant, but maybe there's a project that we don't need to do right now, but we can see if we can apply for a grant. And then I do covet penny money. I've said that many, many times. However, you know, that I don't want to put that off the table. If we could supplement some of that and say, and save the residents some, those some money. I mean, Mark, what's our penny fund? I don't have the sheet in front of me. Do you think that's reasonable to assume we could use some penny money or are we pretty much strapped for that?
Well, you could, you could look from, right now, from year 17, 18, 19, the last three years of the penny. Obviously, until we get the fire station built next year, our penny is pretty tight as you see the thing. But then we have the last, and hopefully, it's not the last three, hopefully in 17, we'll have the next vote for the penny. Know the penny's going out, 10 more, you have, no, we have 13 years of the penny instead of 10. It's a big difference. Obviously, if you've only got three years left of the penny, we're in trouble because we got three years to figure out how best to use our money before we do 10 years of very little.
That's probably not the best, that's probably not the best dependency. I assume it'll pass, but you never know. We saw a green light happen, so.
But in 17, you could look and there'd be, again, you know, there would be ability for especially some of the lower projects you see and hear.
Soon the deficit would hit, you'd be able to maybe use some of that. Okay, but that, that would be last resort, I don't want to use, but I don't want to take it off the table because, I mean, this town, you just look around at what, you know, at what, that penny's done, done for us. So I think having that whole list of projects would be helpful, which ones are priority. And then comparing us to other cities, sir, so say, just say we did adopt this $1 increase a year, which I don't think is, is, that was right to do, but say we did. You're saying we would still be kind of in that same position moving forward, kind of in the middle?
I expect, I expect you would be. Based upon the information that we're gathering today about future increases and needs for these other systems, I don't see how five years from now, most of these systems that are at full cost recovery are not with fees between about $10 and $15.
Because one thing, and this is, I don't have data to back this up, but it's my observation just from being a native here, is that, you know, compared to largely these, these cities on here, maybe with some of these, exception of these cities in Pasco, we have a higher percentage of people on fixed incomes, as the mayor pointed out. And, you know, a dollar, a dollar a month increase to someone who's getting a pay increase each year might not be a huge deal. But if you're on that fixed income, that could, that could hit you more. So I think we should take that into consideration when looking at this graph, that we might have a population that is a bit more sensitive to a cost increase than some of these other cities. I definitely think a dollar a year is just, it's just a lot of money. I mean, you know, people already get sensitive for right or wrong reasons about their utility bills and what they have to pay in taxes and the mileage rate. And if we do a dollar a year. millage rate. And if we do a dollar a year, I think that's, I mean, that's just would be kind of bold. I'm definitely, fifty cents a year is more appetizing, obviously, but I definitely like the idea of just looking at maybe, definitely not jumping the gun and say, okay, right now, we need to increase this X amount of dollars per year. First, look at the, the list of projects we have, rank those in priority, do some of the things that my colleagues have mentioned, though, as far as possible, monies, grant monies, penny money, investment money, the option of borrowing money if possible, and see maybe if we wait several years, how that would look, and then maybe then we could do a fifty-cent year increase. But I just, I don't, it's just my personal opinion right off the bat that a dollar a year, though it'd be nice to have that, to be able to fund, know that our fund is sound for, for, for those years. I don't think with our, with our, with our population, that would be very acceptable. So definitely, I would lean more towards, you know, fifty cents, and, and definitely waiting a few years, as we, as we prioritize and try and find other, other monies for that. But that, but I think that, that list is the first thing to have, and that'll help us make some wise choices. But thank you again for this present, presentation. It's one of the best ones I've seen, as far as, you know, numbers and helping us make decisions. And I like, I like the comparison graphs, and they're, they're really, I, I help that a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And just to add to that, I think all of us at a point where we're saying that, you know, having a list of the projects, but if I look at this right, that dollar a year for five years will get us to a point of funding fully the six point eight million that we need for multi-year CIP through fiscal year twenty-five.
Correct.
And I, my just general thoughts, and you guys, y'all's the ones that actually deal with the numbers, but from now till basically twenty-five, there probably would be some additional projects, or projects might cost more, or whatever. We don't know. But I think one of the things is, is along the lines of what has been said, is that as we look at the projects, look at what the, what the cost is, and how you're projecting it out to be done over that twenty, uh, till fiscal year twenty-five. Basically saying, you know, if we did this, we will be able to do two of the projects within two years. Some of the other projects will be done a year of four or five. When, when do you project that these things will be done? Because one thing is, and what Commissioner Tarpanis said, and Vice Mayor said, and I'm kind of like somewhere in between both of them, you know, if that could be, is that saying, hey, let's just hold off, don't do anything. Well, we don't wanna stop, but how can we strategically look at maybe smaller projects that will still have an impact, that we could do, maybe you have it in year, I don't know, four or five, maybe we can move that up to, to year one, two, in terms of still doing things, not gonna cost us as much, as we look at how do we make the adjustments, so that we don't have that quote-unquote immediate impact. We would hope that the economy continues to get better, things get better, people have a little bit more dollars that they don't have today, that could stand maybe a greater increase as we move along the line. So to me, with that type of information, it would help us to, to make some decisions, whether it should be, you know, fifty cents initially for three years, then move to a dollar, or whatever. Because if I look at it right, you know, and what you was talking about, you know, we're gonna jump seventeen percent, then fifteen percent, and the rest of that, which is, you know, pretty high percentages compared to what some of the other ones are talking about doing in terms of two point seven, what they're doing over a period of time, too. So those type of things, I just think that would help us as we move forward, and we kind of have some. But I think you've done a good job of giving us enough information that we can digest, and still look at how do we make the adjustments to get what we wanna get. Because I think all of us agree that stormwater projects are important, you know? I mean, they're just, what residents don't understand when they're asking us about them, 'cause everybody have their own personal one, the one that affecting the most is the one that you, you think should be done first, they're costly. I mean, you know, every one that I've seen up there, none of them are less than, almost, I guess, close to two hundred thousand on up. So with that information, now I think we'll be better able to, to make some decisions in the future, you know?
Commissioner Tarpanis? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, are you, were you saying something to the effect that potentially we almost have like a staggered approach, whereas one year we do a couple of projects, year three, we don't do a project, year four, we don't do a project, year five, we pick up projects again?
Well, we could. I mean, when we have that, that type of information, we can see, you know, how much these projects are gonna really cost us, but then, a certain period of time, can we wait, generate a little bit more money?
Right.
Then we'll be able to do maybe something that's a little larger, that type of thing, in terms of, you know, prioritizing.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, that's, I think that's a great idea. If we can look at that when we come back, I mean, you know, have a, have a plan set forth for where maybe a couple of years, we don't do a project, and then we pick them up again, and do them for two years, almost like we do our streets and sidewalks, where we do, in odd years, we do, I mean, this isn't, this could be wrong, but in odd years, we do streets, and in even years, we do sidewalks, or maybe it's vice versa. But I mean, you know, something like that, I think would help the burden as well. And that said, maybe we look at a different alternative, or play with the numbers some in terms of, you know, a dollar a year. Maybe it's just a dollar increase for five years, not compounded annually, you know, and see what that does with the new approach to maybe staggering some projects. So, you know, I mean, you're the experts. I feel like there's a lot of different scenarios that could be run to ultimately get us moving in the right direction, you know? But at the end of five years, you're basically doubling the five dollars and sixty-five cents now, which is pretty strong, so.
Yeah, well, a lot of the things that you're mentioning, we do interactively with staff, in terms of the project-specific sensitivity and all the permutations. And it sounds like that might be something that the commission as a whole would have interest in, that maybe at this next workshop, we just bring our model live, and we can go through these types of various alternatives, in maybe a less formal setting, but, where you can turn around and see and be closer to the screen, and we can look at in real time what happens when you change this project, or this funding assumption, or do rates at this level, what level of capital spending can we afford. Maybe that would be a consensus-building process, because we could run several scenarios off of what we heard tonight, but I bet you're still gonna come up with more the next time we meet, that maybe that would be a worthwhile endeavor. But I'll defer to the commission if that would be something be interested in, but we would be happy to do that, is just run it in real time for you. All of these different items, debt funding, grant funding, project timing, rate plans, just like we do interactively with your staff.
It sounds interesting. Yeah, you know, in terms of doing that, I mean, if we're gonna have workshop, excuse me, we have workshop, we have time, we already have somewhat of a foundation in terms of, of knowledge, you know, where we're at right now. So doing something like that might be a good thing to help us come a little, come to a decision about where we should be for the funding.
Another thing to think about next time, again, because I told you, there's so many scenarios, you could look at a small, for instance, lesay, and again, I haven't even formed a recommendation to you, because I wanted to hear what everybody said, but another thing you can do is, is, for instance, after listening to everything tonight, you could institute a fifty cent increase for two years. If you do that, and you look at the chart, you're gonna be in the same place, because, I mean, you'll pass Newport Ritchie, but really, they shouldn't be in, I guarantee you, Largo will pass us by that time. So a fifty cent increase for two years would put us in the same place comparatively on this forum. It gets us to seventeen, where we'll see a fruition, all these projects is coming forward. What is that money being generated? And then, instead of just waiting and going, at least we'll start a movement, because we already know where everybody's going, you know? I think everybody in five years are gonna be at about that ten mark, too, but that's another thing. You said, if going out over five and ten years is not the thing to do, maybe, again, 'cause you haven't had an increase since 2001 in these things, you know, a dollar increase over two years, and then look at all the scenarios you've got, these can run again, and see where we are in doing projects, or any other scenario that, two years, three years, one year, you could still do something like that to move forward as we go through. So those are also options that we've got, along with everything you've mentioned. So that's another thing just to think about and contemplate, and especially when we come back and run all the scenarios, we'll probably run a scenario such as that, again, moving the projects out, but still adding a little bit to us to maybe knock some of those lower proj-- maybe we could do some of those less expensive projects that you can see. And we'll come back with a little more detail on those projects coming up, from the, the big one, the two million one on the east side of City Hall, to the smaller ones, what they entail, how they impact the residents. So you can weigh all that into your decision, too, and stuff. If maybe that, again, fifty cent over two years can do some of those smaller ones, you can still help some residents that are in need. So we'll bring that for you to think about as we're, you know, contemplating different scenarios to come back to, decide what we're gonna do.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm all in, in support. I'm in favor of looking at all kinds of different scenarios, fifty cents, seventy-five cents, a dollar, you know, whatever different scenarios. More information is gonna be useful. I just, I don't really have an additional question. I just wanted to make this additional comment, and the city manager kind of touched on this a moment ago. When we look at, you know, if we were to do the one dollar increase, which is a seventeen percent increase, and then next year'd be a fifteen percent increase, followed by a thirteen percent increase, and I think everyone on this board feels like those are really big increases, including me, and I think our residents are gonna feel like they're really big increases. But it really is important to keep in mind that we have not had an increase in fourteen years. And you, you can bet, when you look at the chart on page fourteen, you can bet that Clearwater, and Dunedin, and Safety Harbor, you can bet these cities were having increases throughout that time. Somehow, Clearwater got to fourteen dollars, somehow Dunedin got to nine dollars and seventy-two cents, and we're only at five dollars and sixty-five cents. I'm not saying necessarily that means we should do the one dollar, but I think it is important to put that into perspective, that, gosh, even if we did do the one dollar per year for five years, if nobody else changes anything, we'd be barely above Dunedin, which is interesting information. That's assuming they aren't increasing, but they apparently already have increases scheduled. I'm not saying that to, to say that I'm in support necessarily of a one dollar increase at this point. I just think it's, it's interesting to put that into perspective.
Just one more, one more thing, 'cause I was also thinking this, Vice Mayor, as the city manager was talking, is that, you know, it's nice to have a comparison in terms of other communities, you know, 'cause it's nice to know what everybody else is doing, and, and see where we rank, and, you know, see where we, we rank in terms of fees across the board, not just stormwater, millage rate included. But it's also relative to each independent municipality or city's elevation, their landscape, their rainfall. So I mean, you know, it's, it's nice to be able to compare, but it's, you know, you also have to take into consideration the external factors that we're not seeing as well in terms of their rates. So just food for thought.
That's true for millage rate as well.
And I, I definitely agree with all of that. And I think, too, is that what, what you've already said, those projects, being able to see them, is gonna be very important. Simply because, you know, once you, once you see something, and we travel around all the time, then you start saying, man, this is important. I mean, we need to get this out of the way. And we know when we do it, the residents are gonna appreciate it. I mean, because everybody has to navigate when it, when it rains. I mean, those of us that, you know, are tarponites, we know, don't go down this street, don't go down that street. Other people don't know. So it, it's not a good thing for us when people have their cars, you know, there on the side. It may good for business for the tow trucks, but, so, once we get all that information, I think we'll be able to make a better decision. And I think we can come together, figure out where that dollar amount would be, you know, so. I don't know, anything else anybody got for this? Keith, you got any closing remarks there?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
The city manager? Not a clerk?
No comments.
Let's see, that's, that's seven, what's that?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five? Nah, it might be thirty-four there.
Digital clock.
Oh, hey!
That's gonna require an increase.
My work is with close, you know, I, between, well, I can go.